Councilor Wright will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to take care of the city's business tonight. God, I pray that you would give us guidance and wisdom and favor as we seek to do our very best to serve these citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
If you'd please join me in the pledge, sure, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please have a seat. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Councilon Carroll was well representing us today. We appreciate that. I know you miss Miss Kendry, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, we do, too. We do, too. Okay. First time we have is public comments. I don't think we had any public comments online, do we? I'm not aware of any, any other public comments out here tonight? Okay, if not, we'll pass on to the next thing, the new business, this resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, job description. Uh, revise Event Marketing Coordinator, Councilon Amio. Director of Operations, Grunfield, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor should have in the packet a copy of the job description. It has one day update on it. That update is the Supervisory Position. It should now list as Director of Operations slash City Clerk. That's the only change.
Okay, this time entertain a motion.
Make a motion to read off the revised job description.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion, anybody? Hear you none. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All at both the same time, it passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now have a new job description. I'll go ahead and sign it and pass it down to the Senate. Okay, item number three, I don't think we're quite ready for yet, is it? Oh, item number two, man, we're going crazy here. Resolution to adopt the Housen County Joint Comprehensive Plan Update. Uh, and I was expecting somebody from the reading position to be here and of course they're coming down from Macon, which means they could be anywhere in between in traffic, so.
Mayor, do you want to move that item to the bottom of the agenda and then see if he gives a chance to get here?
That's right. We'll move to the bottom of the agenda. Um, item number three is a home-based business license. WIT Brothers LLC, Arlington, Kenneth, Houston, uh, 520 St. Marlow Drive. Councilon Bird and City Council, Bedford, please.
Uh, yes, the business is a, uh, it's like, uh, they're renting out trailers for various purposes. The trailers are not stored in Eagle Springs, I'm assuming, not inside the, uh, city unless it's in an approved, uh, area. Uh, is, uh, Mr. Doosan here?
Yes, he's not, yeah.
Um, he's, he's, uh, owned several other businesses, uh, here locally and I haven't seen a reason why this business is not welcomed or offered to his business owners since being in the city.
Okay, are you taking a motion now?
Allow me, motion to, uh, allow, uh, Wood Brothers LLC to set up business in itself.
Second.
Have a motion to second. I notice here he has permission to Eagle Springs. They actually have the business there at his house. And it's just like you say, if this could be located with papers, you can. All right, uh, no further discussion. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All at both the same time, hear none? Mr. Doosan, welcome to a business with the city. We appreciate you very much for doing that. All right, item number four is approval of fiscal year 2023 budget preparation calendar and a born budget subcommittee. Councilon Bird and City Council, Harrison, please.
Mr. Harrison, discuss it.
Right. I would be agree with you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, in your folder tonight, you'll find, uh, the fiscal year 2023 budget preparation calendar. We adopt this every year, uh, as we start the budget process. I'll just go through and highlight just a, a few of the key dates. Um, of course, today, February 14th, we will approve the budget and Mayor Council will vote to appoint the budget subcommittee. Uh, April the 8th, uh, is when, uh, the department heads budgets would be provided to the budget subcommittee, uh, for their review. Uh, April 18th through the 27th would be the timeframe that myself, department heads, and the budget subcommittee would get together in all budget conferences. Uh, June 7th, we would conduct, conduct a public hearing. And June 21st, uh, the city council would adopt the budget. So those are just some key points, key, key dates there as we move forward, uh, with adopting the budget. The budget calendar, excuse me.
Okay, anybody else? Just wait, uh, I'm gonna take a motion to adopt the budget calendar as prepared. Some moved.
Second.
And I have a second, okay? We have a discussion on it. All right, the, uh, I don't think we need to do a separate one for the budget subcommittee. That'd be part of it.
And I don't know if Mayor Council has discussed and, um, if y'all.
Well, I, I'll entertain a motion to, to change that, too, to add to it.
Or amend that.
To amend it.
I'll, I'll be glad to amend the, uh, motion, Mr. Mayor, to include, uh, approval of budget subcommittee. I second that motion.
Okay.
And so.
I think that works out all right. Does that work out, Christopher?
Yes, I do.
All right.
You just need to stay with it around.
Right. That's why I figured we were gonna talk about that during the discussion.
Right, I, I understand we have two, uh, volunteers for it. That's Councilon Bird and Councilon Evans. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they both agree. Okay, so the motion will include those names.
Okay. Uh.
Okay. Anybody have any further discussion on it? Hear you none. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All at both the same time. Okay, we have a budget committee going.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
That's right. I, I, I'm praying that places will be as well done as last year, of course, right? It'll be better. Okay, I promise it'll be better. Yeah, I got you. I love it. All right. One more information, update on ARPA state local recovery funds. Final rule, Councilon Bird and City Council, Harrison again, please.
Again, the City Council, Harrison.
Thank you, Councilon Bird. Um, this evening, Mayor Council, also in your folder there is just, uh, one sheet there front and back, and it talks about the ARPA fund rule which came out January the 6th, 2022. Um, before I go into the change for that final, I just want to review or recap the summary of the eligible uses. Uh, under the ARPA, uh, grant, uh, the first is respond to the COVID-19 and the negative impacts. Uh, the second is premium paid to eligible workers performing essential work during the pandemic. The third is provision of government services due to loss of revenue. Um, and under the final rule, there is a new option that I'll go over in just a minute. And the fourth eligible use was the water and sewer infrastructure and the broadband infrastructure, okay? As the Treasury has adopted, uh, the final ruling, uh, there was a, a pretty significant, significant change on how we calculate the lost revenue. Uh, cities may now elect what they call a standard allowance. Um, and elect to claim as lost revenue for provision of government services up to $10 million. Well, obviously, we didn't get $10 million, so if Mayor Council elects, they can, uh, just collect the full amount. Um, so under this option, which is newly offered in the Treasury rule, uh, it's presumed that up to $10 million in revenue has been lost due to the public health emergency. Recipients are permitted to use this amount to fund government services. Uh, this standard method is based on extensive analysis of average revenue loss across states and localities and offers a simple, convenient way to determine revenue loss. Uh, if Mayor Council did choose or elect the standard allowance, um, they would elect to approve the full amount of the city's ARPA local recovery funds, of which is $2,944,172, to be used for the project provision of government services due to lost revenue. Uh, this is a blanket election for the full amount of the ARPA funds. However, as Mayor Council approved that, they would still have to approve within the budget what government services these funds would be spent on. Um, and we would still have to report for, uh, each, uh, April 30th annual reporting what Mayor Council chose to spend those funds on, even though they say it's, do, it's for government services due to lost revenue. We would have to specify what government services before we spend it or as we spend it. Um, we did in the fall, uh, Mayor Council did approve for $277,000 to be, uh, part of that project, government services due to loss of revenue. That was actually calculated, uh, under the first and original option in the interim rule, um, where we would really have to calculate lost revenue for each distinctive year, 2020, 21, 22, 23. With the new election, we can just kind of do this blanket rule and say the whole thing is lost revenue. And then we would just kind of say, well, what government services are we going to designate that to? Would it be, uh, repaving those roads? Would it be water and sewer infrastructure? Could it be, uh, uh, certain expenditures, you know, within our budget? Um, I'm not asking for any vote today. I just kind of wanted to bring that change to Mayor Council just to kind of let you know what kind of came down the pipeline. And, uh, maybe there'll be some discussion and maybe, uh, in March, we might move forward with that election. Any questions?
No questions, anybody? Thank you very much for that.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm thinking about item two. Well, he may still show up. There's two guys that won't do it, so we, so let's see what's, what happened, uh. You ever heard anything else from him?
Yes, sir. I know that speaking with, um, Mr., I think it's Taylor Stickle, was, um, gonna be the original individual who'd come to the meeting. But from what I understand, Mayor Council just needed to pass the resolution and he, there wasn't any kind of presentation. It was, um.
They just like to have somebody here.
And answer any type of questions if Mayor Council has.
For all we know, he could have been trying to call us.
Yeah, I've got the resolutions.
He could have been trying to call us to tell us it could be your old phones, phones have been down, all that kind of stuff.
True.
You have the resolution?
Yes, sir. So, man.
Everybody's online.
Gary, you can have my copy, man.
I don't have it, man, I'm sorry.
You have the original?
That's the resolution right there.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, that's it. That's it. That's all it is.
I got one of that, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, well, the comprehensive plan review, I went to all the various meetings. I attended all of them. Mike, you were at most of them, too, weren't you?
Yes.
So, just, you know, the information in there is, is, you know, something we'll go for the next five years. But it's something we've talked about quite a bit in here. So I don't think there's any particular need to worry about or at all. I think you just go ahead and, uh, do it. If you have any questions, get you a copy of the comprehensive plan and review again if you want to. Uh, I think one or two of you may have been in some of the comprehensive plan reviews, too. So, uh, in that case, then, uh, you entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution. Um, adopting the joint comprehensive plan update for Housen County, the cities of Centerville, Perry, and Warner Robins.
Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the joint comprehensive plan update. For Housen County and the cities of Centerville, Perry, and Warner Robins.
Say that motion, Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Now, the only change I see on this, saying Christopher, is, uh, on top there where it says Perry. We wish this Perry is out.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll, I can go in and change that.
Okay.
That came from Mr. Stickle.
Oh, I understand.
Yes, sir.
I know it.
Gotcha. We'll make that change.
No, my eye just caught that right off. My eye is bored.
It's all right.
Just go check it out.
We'll, we'll change it, sir.
Okay, that's a, it's spelled the way we've been in there, say it.
Uh, that's true.
Here it is, here it is.
Oh, okay. Motion to second then, uh, well, I, I just go ahead and read it very quickly. Whereas the 1989 Georgia Planning Act requires that all local governments submit a comprehensive plan. And whereas OCGA 50-8-1, etc., gives the Department of Community Affairs authority to establish standards and procedures for appropriate and timely comprehensive planning by all local governments in Georgia. And whereas all portions of the joint comprehensive plan update by Housen County and the cities of Centerville, Perry, and Warner Robins were completed by the city of Centerville with the assistance of the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And whereas the document was reviewed by the Georgia Department for Community Affairs and was found to be in compliance with the local planning requirements, therefore be resolved that the city of Centerville hereby adopt the joint comprehensive plan update for Housen County and the cities of Centerville, Perry, and Warner Robins. He's here?
I believe that's him, yes.
Tell him we already voted no, Mike.
Start over again.
That's him.
Joe, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I had a phone loss internet, so I couldn't get directions.
Uh, excuses, excuses.
I'm sorry.
Everybody. Well, we've already, uh, we've already, uh, brought it up. We're getting ready to vote on it now.
Yes, sir.
And we discussed it with details. Anything in particular you might want to add that you think we may have been needing to know?
No, sir. I mean, this, uh, project's been underway for a long time. Actually, before I even started with the regional commission, um, the state, uh, reviewed the plan. There is, uh, no changes needed for anything that affected Centerville. There's only a couple for Warner Robins' work plan. Um, I'm very happy with the end product and happy to answer any questions you guys had.
Well, we appreciate you coming very much.
Sir, and I, I brought, uh, copies of the QR code if anybody would like, uh, in public or council members would like as well.
Okay, most of us attended all the planning sessions, so, uh, we, we're aware of the contents of everything, so. You have a question?
So why'd you bring the QR code? You can't use a phone.
I just came up.
It's so good. You're a guy.
Keep that going. Okay, that's great. Okay, all questions? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All at both the same time. Hear you none, we have adopted the comprehensive plan.
All right.
Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. All right, next time we got here is Congressman Council, post one, please. All right, thank you. Post two.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Post three.
I'm going to go in the corner, Mr. Mayor, nothing.
Oh, post four, please.
I have two. Just rushed my phone.
Uh, okay, I got you. Uh, yeah, I really don't have anything either, you know, I just, spring's almost here. Looking forward to it. Okay, at this point, then I'll entertain a motion to go into the executive session for personnel matters.
Second.
Salute. I gotta assume that in a second, all right?
Councilon Wright, second.
See, I'm not allowed to, yeah, I'm not allowed to make a motion. I forgive you.
Yeah. Councilon Wright made the motion, I second.
He did. Got you. Okay, all favors say aye. Aye, all at both the same time. Hear you none, we're down to the executive session. Hear none, we're down to the executive session. We will return.
Yeah, there you can sign it. It was under the chart.
I didn't think about that.
Yeah.
If you get a chance to take that thing, we will. It shouldn't.
Shouldn't be.
Can you shut down?
Yeah, but that shouldn't.
Well, I shut the whole.
Shouldn't be anything.
Well, not right now.
It's boring, man.
This was.
Oh, yeah. You're right. When you see them like that, you're like, you're like, oh my gosh.
That's what she said, I don't think.
Junior.
Other than her husband's hair, she and then he's, and I apologized for a long time. I think the two of them, he's probably a model hitter.
Oh, yeah. Pull all the hair out.
So how about you?
I'm also no grandkids yet. Well. See, I'm surprised. My son, he's, him and his girlfriend, fiance now, they're talking about having a few before she turns 30, so she only got a few years.
Oh.
We'll see. I mean, my daughter, she doesn't. I'm not gonna worry, I mean, they want to do it right.
Yeah.
I'm glad about that.
Absolutely. Okay, I've lost track of the name on the council. The kids are retired, but we've got a 13-year-old, kind of three-year-old. I mean, mostly three-year-olds. That 10-year-old was pretty solid, a shame, consistent, solid. I'm telling them, let's get the watch, I mean. And our son, which one? I had a little thought about it, and it was just, because my daughter, when she was still in school and there, and we got, so she would say, maybe seven years. I thought it would be a few more. And I think she'd be totally, really, really, kind of. And then it'd be a fact, so that's what I'm thinking. It's different. Trying to talk to this wife, because I'm not scared to kill her, she's like a grandparent.
So when it comes to first, that would be a parent.
Because you get the Bible and, you know, the story and the curvy and the child and the other stuff there.
Yeah.
You know, if I'm sure I want to get some, and, you know, Claire or Mark or Jack or so, you know, I mean.
Right. I'm 24/7. Yeah. Pull on the door this and do this every once in a while and give it back. Chacking up on Mountain Dew and candy and give it back.
That's why I told Nikki I had, she's going to my house, she always said, I don't know what happened. She's working full-time, going for hatchet, and right there, but, whatever, but, um, back after work, it absolutely didn't have something to do with.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's right. Yeah.
No, she gets a lot, she's a maid, so.
That's good.
Like, this is out on dates. Maybe it's living on that, she's about five to eight, she's five years old. I mean, she's a little bit, so.
That's good. That's real good.
I think that's a good maker. I don't know, two words, I'll have them all over right here.
Right.
Right.
Now, there's forms that, well, that, um.
She's, you know, she's over here, so I don't know, she's a lot, but it's close enough to where you can see anybody, so you can kind of see that. I don't know, we don't.
Yeah.
It's like a word.
Yeah, I do.
She's some crazy, you know, for instance, you know, set that there. I know it, I know it, I know it, I know it. I'm happy for y'all, but I'm not. I don't dig this. I mean, I wasn't, I didn't remember this, so I'm, so that case, so, um, opposite of, you know, it was popping, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Verizon, they're like, they're, they showed something, kind of blew on our face. Down on the peanut butter, I was in New York, but I was weird as long as I was in the office, in the office.
Yeah. Yeah, while you're at the office, that's the thing, while you're walking, walking, that's okay.
I know.
Yeah. Okay, it's fixed now. We'll see.
It's working so hard. So what's going on with the fire problem?
Do what?
Yeah, so what's going on with the fire problem?
Get you to the new building.
That's true.
So, but it's just, it's going to do.
I'm sure you want part of it.
Oh, yeah, we're proud of it. Take care of it. I said, I don't know, a few cakes still.
That's right. Or crying, but I had it.
Are you, Miss Sarah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Turned out nice, that's the, that's the, we're proud of it. Had a lot of wall sprays.
Just a small wall. I don't get this again, but, um, yeah. I take them off.
Gone through a couple now, I think.
I'm sure he'll be here. Well, once we get this. Chip going. I could see your question.
I am liking the person.
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah. What did I say? Which I was just.
Same copy of the dollar bill. Same copy of what it was.
Nobody wants to work anymore, that's.
Huh?
Nobody wants to work anymore.
Or if I wanted to.
It's 45.
I wonder what business charges for that.
Well, I don't know, but I don't, where it's billed, it's different. Yeah. Right, um, see, if it'll, you know, it's gonna charge more if it's on a bill. Surely. It's $150 or something. Or asking them. I remember, I remember when we did that, it was like. I was.
Long money.
Just because, I mean, and, and they are like, right, I never even, I have a whole lot of, like.
Yeah.
That's me. Never even. But it's not, and so. And so on the back of it, on the front, it's the business card. And on the back, you know, it's a card.
Oh, you got.
And. And we even had. We found that.
Then you have options.
Yeah. Yeah, like. It would basically be double, because they would have to be in the management department and that was. Yeah. Right. And so, so that's the way that she's. I think. And we're getting one. But I need to go over, I mean, she's. It really needs to be down there, but, um, I would just, I mean. Sure. It looks so, because she got another one that she was. A lot of them, I do. Well, but I thought it was so good, so.
Reboot. Okay, reboot. Ah, CSIS, sir. Do what? CSIS. She was having problems printing checks and then. Instead of getting there, messing around.
That's my answer, babe, but that's.
Hey, that's the.
I'll turn it back on.
It's the number one, it's the number one reboot. Same thing, that's what I tried to do with the phone. It goes to phone sometimes.
Because I got a horn, but mine never gets turned off.
What's that? Phone, mine never does either.
So it just kind of hangs up and every once in a while, you know, I have to turn it off to my home, but, I mean, for the most part, it stays on.
That's what I didn't know, but that was, that happened.
Mine doesn't run, has a, I don't have it restart on Tuesday, this 2:00 AM or something.
Really? Okay.
So, they can kick it in. You got one of those smart phones, man.
Do you have, do I have?
Same phone. It's smarter than me. Google. This video isn't really. Do what? This video is not gonna have the, doesn't have the little dynamic. While it's funny and it's sad, while it's. Have to get it where it is. Who's paying? I don't know, anyway. Way to be. All right, we go back to it. Christopher, you ready for me to?
Yes, sir.
Back in session.
Well, at this time, it would be appropriate, Mayor, to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution.
All right, entertain a motion. Okay, have a second, give you a second. Motion in a second.
Okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay?
At this time, Mayor, if you raise your right hand personally appeared before the undersigned testing officer, do it authorize to administer oath, Mayor John R. Harley, who, after being due this morning, proposes an on oath statement following. I was the presiding officer of the meeting of the City, uh, Centerville City Council held on the 14th day of February, 2022. That is my understanding that OCGA 50-14-4, Section B, Section 1, provides as follows. When any meeting of an agency is closed to the public pursuant to this code section, chairperson or other person presiding over such meeting shall execute and file with official minutes of the meeting and notarized affidavit stating under the oath that the subject matter of the meeting or a closed portion thereof was supposed to matter to the limits of sections provided by the law, identifying the specific relevant exception. The subject matter of the closed meeting or closed portion of the meeting, here on 14th day of February, 2022, which is closed for the purposes of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or this miss or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee as authorized by OCGA 50-14-3, B, Section 2. Closed portion of this session is allowed by OCGA Title 50, Chapter 14, was devoted to matters within the exceptions provided by the law. This affidavit is being executed for the purpose of complying with the mandate of OCGA 50-14-4, B, Section 1, that such affidavit be executed, and you so swear.
I so swear.
Man, it's wild. I missed that.
It is about it.
Yeah.
Okay, at this, at this time, then I entertain, uh, I think we have a motion out there.
I've numbered.
I'd be after the resolution.
I've numbered eight.
I've numbered eight, uh, support economic development director position, Councilman Ermehood. So I will say, sir.
Yep.
So, sir, I make a motion that we appoint Shannon Bryant as the Economic Development Director at the salary of $50,000 a year, effective 1 March 22, pending pre-employment requirements.
Okay, I have a motion here, second.
Second.
And a second. You just said. There you go. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Welcome, Shannon.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We'll look forward to it. Okay. That's the last thing, Jim. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.